They moved, don't they? Martin, are we ready to go?
We are ready, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, I will call the March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five regular meeting of the Mill Creek City Council to order begin of the pledge of allegiance and I'll lead it tonight.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We are roll call.
Mayor Holtclaw?
Here, kind of.
Mayor Proton Vignell?
Here.
Councilmember Cavallari?
Here.
Councilmember Steckler?
Here.
Councilmember Allison?
Here.
Councilmember Duque?
Here.
Councilmember Paddock?
Present.
Okay, audience communication. Miss, I'll start with Miss Heidel. Name and city of residence if you'd like to disclose it?
Barb Heidel, Mill Creek, Washington. At this point, positions within the city have been filled, studies have been conducted, retreats have been held, tours of other surrounding cities and what they've done have been done. It's time for action. Let's make some significant observable progress with the sub area slash South Town Center and D R C C property. How many more years are going to slip by? I understand government agencies are slow, but costs are not going to go down. Let the residents know it's a reality that you're moving forward and accomplishing a tangible solution. True, concrete decisions need to be made now, not in the next few years. Let's make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. Tannis?
Hello, Tannis Goldieski. I'm Mill Creek. I just have an invitation for you all from the Jackson High School Theater Society. They will be putting on a musical, the Twenty-Fifth Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee, next weekend and the weekend after. So that would be March twenty-first and twenty-second and twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, Fridays at seven PM, Saturdays at two PM and seven PM. And a little bird told me that you'll have a special guest audience member or acting member, one of your colleagues will be there, March twenty-ninth. So each per each production will have audience plans, basically. So it should be a great show. The Theater Society publicity head tells me middle school and up is probably the age range. She said maybe elementary school. I don't know if they'd enjoy it, but there's nothing terribly objectionable. So come out and see the show. It's great. It's at Jackson High School in the Commons and you can get more information on ticket purchasing on their website. Thanks.
Thanks, Tannis. Is there any member of the public online? I'm not sure I see any. It looks like it's all staff. So with that, we'll move on with the agenda. We have no presentations, no old business, no new business, no proposed new initiatives, no study session, but we do have a consent agenda. Item G, approval of checks number six eight five one four through six eight five seven seven and ACH wire transfers in the amount of three hundred thirty-four thousand, six hundred twenty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents. The audit committee was myself and Councilmember Duque. I had no exceptions, any exceptions?
No exceptions.
And item F, H, payroll and benefit ACH payments in the amount of two hundred seventy-five thousand, nine hundred forty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents. No exceptions.
No exceptions.
And item I, City Council meeting minutes of February fourth, two thousand twenty-five, February eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Consent agenda is approved. Reports, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one report and we have a few more staff reports, but I'll start with the org chart that you had in front of you. Councilmember Steckler had the opportunity to come into City Hall and do a kind of administrative ride along, just updating him on a lot of things that are happening within operations and it was good, good to our meeting, just to give him my information on kind of what we're working on, type of project, the tasks, things that have, we have started and not completed yet and so forth, and also his opportunity to ask questions. One of his requests was to provide a organizational chart of the city and so I thought we would add also the positions underneath then distribute that to council. So you have a good idea of kind of what our high level structure is and the employees that are existing within the city of Mill Creek. You'll find there are sixty-seven, includes both full-time and part-time. Org chart typically is used for internal purposes, improve our workflows, establish hierarchies, chain of command and so forth, but I thought it'd be a good idea for council to have an idea of kind of, kind of where we sit and pretty timely because we have a lot of big strategic projects we're going to start working on as well and and that's all I have on that. So with that, I'll take any questions on this.
Any questions? Not seeing any.
Thank you, and I'll hand it over to Chief White.
Thank you. Good, good evening, Mayor. Mayor Proton, Council. Just wanted to let everyone know that in next week's packet, there will be an item on the consent agenda regarding surplus police equipment. We have worked a trade to obtain some equipment that is needed by the police department with the surplus equipment. So trying to take the most fiscally responsible avenue and see if we can provide some better equipment to the officers with the trade of the surplus equipment. So that'll be in next week's consent agenda in your packet. Also, if I may, take a few moments to remind everybody about Thursday's ribbon cutting at the substation, starting at two in the afternoon, going till four, and that will be at forty fifteen, one thirty-third Street Southeast, number one three five, the Mill Creek Substation. Hope to see everybody there. I'll take any questions.
I don't see any questions. City Engineer, what's up? Thank you.
Good evening, Council. I have two updates for you. First, Highway ninety-six, a while ago, we came to you and asked for an emergency declaration. We have finally gotten through all of the red tape and are starting construction next week on the replacement of the stormwater pipe crossing the highway. So it will be overnight work. We're anticipating lane reductions, not closures, but reductions to one lane in each direction from about nine PM to five thirty AM, five days a week for three weeks. So I just wanted to get that out there to let everybody know that that will be happening and to plan accordingly. Are there any questions on that?
Go ahead.
Just, just a comment, Dan. I really, I certainly appreciate the work being done in the evening, starting at nine PM and, and not interfering with, with rush hour or even day traffic. So good job to whoever orchestrated that contract.
Thank you. The other item I would like to bring you guys up to speed on is the NPVS requirement or compliance. We got the final agreed order with Ecology and have signed the agreement. In there, they actually reduced the possible daily fines down to one thousand dollars per day from ten thousand. Additionally, there will be no assessed fines provided we meet all of the requirements by the end of the year. So we have a set schedule. We have full plans on how to meet all of these requirements and it's actually a very positive agreement for us to meet these. So we have been working extensively with Ecology to make sure that we are on board and on track with this. And in fact, one of those requirements is now available for public viewing and comment. The stormwater management plan, the swamp, is posted on the website right now. It is available for comment. If the, if the public would like to comment on that, please feel free to email us at S W P at millcreekwad.gov. This is basically what we did last year to comply with the requirements and what we will be doing this year to comply. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? No questions. Great work from where we're at a couple of years ago when you first brought this to us. So great job.
No other reports, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, my only report is I'm tired. I just got back this afternoon. So thank you, Mayor Protem, for covering for me while I was gone. By two weeks from now when we next convene, I will be well rested. Any report, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. All I have is that I had the S C T exploratory committeeing or meeting, committee meeting, I can't talk today, and I just wanted to give an update because mostly we were just having some discussions on the things that we would like to, how we'd like things to change and what we'd like to pull in and really kind of got to a discussion on, we need a little more information on what all actually S C T handles right now because we have people that aren't quite clear. So they're going to come back to us with some of that information. But I will give you more information from that after the twenty-sixth because I'm going to sit down and put together something and I'm the one that's going to give the presentation to the actual committee. So I will make sure all of you have my notes and updates from that presentation once I give that presentation. Thanks.
Councilmember Cavallari?
No report.
Councilmember Steckler?
Yes, first of all, I wanted to make a comment. The City Manager talked about the, the fact that he and I, he allowed me to take a ride along in the administrative side of our city. And as weird as that sounds, it was a great two hours. I got a great appreciation for all the different departments, what they do. And you know, we've had so many changes. It, it, when he presented me with this org chart, I was like, okay, now I'm getting on board here. I understand where we are, what changes we've made from the last time I went through something like this. And by adding the, the names of each of the departments and knowing who the, the head count is and where they are and what exactly they do, I, I just got to, you know, say, I, I asked Martin if we could share this with every other council members. I, I hope, I hope you, you know, can appreciate it because we are going to be looking at some staffing issues coming up and it's one of the best things for us to do as council members to make sure we understand what the current staff is and exactly what the count is. And as we're looking at where we're going to be possibly hiring, where are we going to be hiring, what will they be doing? And I think it'll allow us to make much more informed and comfortable decisions. So I, I encourage the ride-alongs for every other member of the council. Many of you are probably better versed at this than I am, but for me, it was a, it was a, it was a great eye-opener. The other one is the, I wanted to mention quickly. So thanks again, Martin, for putting that together and sharing that with, with everyone. I also want to mention that Arts and Beautification Board met. They are heavily involved in looking at some possible artwork utilizations from ARPA funds. So if anyone has any thoughts that they have, gee, I, I really wish they would consider this. I've never mentioned it to anyone. Please feel free. We've not made decisions yet, but you can direct those either to Jody, you know, in Marketing Communications, to myself, or to the Chairman of the A and B Committee. Feel, feel free to bring, bring those forward, but we also are still looking for one more member for the Arts and Beautification Board. Need that oddball number filled for, for voting. So we have not an even number. If you have anyone that's considering, there's also a great article in The View that just came out about Arts and Beautification. Thank you, Leah. To get that out and make the public aware of what's, what, what opportunities are available for them to get involved with their, their city government. Thank you.
Councilmember Allison?
No report.
Councilmember Duque?
Parks and Rec met last week and it was a great, you know, they do fantastic things, but what I really appreciate and wanted to flag for all of you is that we went through the recreation survey in more details about understanding the numbers of the responses and, and just going through each one. And I found the data very helpful in understanding. I also appreciate just having a look to see what people find, the times of days, the locations, all those kinds of things about the recreation program, but specifically the needs and, and the requests of like, what are the types of classes and programs? I felt the response was that we're actually meeting all of the, the, you know, we have a really well-rounded recreation program. It's small. If you have any specific questions, I'm happy to respond, but Colton, thank you to Colton in our MarCom and of course to all of Parks and Rec for continuing to follow up with that. So that was really good. Last week, I had the opportunity to go and speak to two classes at Penny Creek Elementary and, and what, and I got to do it with Snowbridge County Councilmember Jared Mead. It's his alma mater. So it was nice that we both got to go. But this is what I wanted to share with you guys. There was mayor, they had two mayors for each of the classes. They introduced themselves to us. We gave them a nice certificate of appreciation. Thank you to Jody from MarCom for helping me with that and, and gave them cool pens and things like that. But they had very specific questions about our job because they're making their own communities and they're having land use issues where they are talking about the development of a mall in an area. And I was told that some of the conversations is, how dare you cut down the trees when you told us you wouldn't? And what does this mean? Those kind of, those kind of talks are happening. So I just want you guys to know that second, third and fourth graders are learning, you know, just the word land use and it was pretty special and they were great. So that was wonderful. And reminder for an invite, if you guys are available next Tuesday, it's that third Tuesday of the month. So Mill Creek Chamber of Commerce Lunch and Learn Meeting, I will be there. I think, I think I got Councilmember Steckler as my buddy and I know I have a couple of staff members who will be in attendance as well as my buddies as well. So if there's anyone else who wants to attend, just let me know. Just so that I know we can flag if there's any notice of more than three. Perfect. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Paddock?
No report.
Audience communication, second bite at the apple. One, once, twice, three times? Okay. We have a couple topics for executive session this evening. One is to consider the potential acquisition of real property pursuant to R C W forty-two point thirty point one one zero, subsection one B, and to discuss potential litigation pursuant to R C W forty-two point three zero point one one zero, subsection one, a little I. I believe, how much time do we need? Thirty minutes?
I think we'll need, for the second one, we'll need about five and for the first one, about fifteen. So probably twenty.
Yeah, we'll start with twenty and am I correct that no action will be taken at the conclusion?
You are correct, Mayor.
Okay, so with that, we will recess into executive session at six sixteen until six forty-one. Is that my math correct?
And Cora Daddy's here. He said, she says the door, the door is unlocked, right? He can come in. Okay.
Thanks for getting me that information.
Perfect timing, honey. Love you. Perfect timing. I'll see you soon.
At six thirty nine, without objection, council extended the executive session until six forty six.
Now, I think this is just. Good. The chief of. She said this way, and it doesn't feel nice, but it's very different. It's possible, obviously, they, you know, in the circumstances, they start at. Same, same, so, absolutely, definitely. Same, but still. There was a lot of time, but it stayed with me. So, I, sure. Very long, so much time, but. So, because, yeah, my, my, my. But, I don't know, that's, go, that's. It's really, maybe. You know, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we'll trust the stuff that I have. Type, uh, cool, so, these are the, uh, still, I don't stand by, they want. Yeah. Uh, I understand. Well, this is what I want. Sure. What do you want, what do you want? No, I, I love you, and when you want to be, of the guy, you are.
At six forty three, without objection, council extended the executive session until six fifty.
And. I don't want to talk about the particular review, and you're not set up or a volunteer for a citizen call or something. Right.
At six forty nine, without objection, council extended the executive session until six fifty five.
I am, yes.
Okay, the council concluded its executive session at six fifty-four. No action is being taken and with no further action or agenda items on our agenda this evening, then we'll adjourn the meeting at six fifty-four PM. Thank you.
Wait, I'm in a...
Yeah, you are.